And thanks for coming out. Our forum gained presence. This meeting will now come to order. I'd now like to invite the Reverend Father John Sheridan, pastor of Sacred Heart Church, to come up and offer an invocation.
Let us pray. Lord God, we thank you. We thank you for our town. For all that has been, and more importantly, for all that is to come. Thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us in so many ways. We ask you that during this time, you open our ears, open our eyes, open our hearts, open ourselves, open another unto you, that we may discern your will, truly give the town peace, hope, and joy. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask members of our Veterans Council to lead us in inviting allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now if you'll join me in welcoming our own Valene Delby, our selectwoman, who is going to give her rendition of our National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gives proof to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, very nice. I'd also once again like to take a moment to thank our student council members from our own Middleborough High School, who elected pages or counters for this evening's meeting. Thank you all for participating. I have one other announcement to make before I go into my normal opening remarks. Our town clerk is not with us tonight due to illness. And as a result of that, in compliance with Chapter 41 of Section 19 of the Mass General Laws, the Assistant Town Clerk shall, in the absence of the clerk, perform his duties and have powers and be subject to the requirements and penalties applicable to him, in this case, her. Elizabeth Pizaro is our Assistant Town Clerk. She was officially appointed to life first in 2012, and she's with us tonight to take care of those duties. At this time, I would entertain a motion to allow, as necessary, the following non-resident individuals to address this special town meeting. Charles Prestel, Town Manager; Stephen Dooney, Town Accountant; Lance Benjamino, Fire Chief; Joseph Silva, Water Superintendent; Chris Peck, DPW Director; Rosalie Weiss, Superintendent of Schools; Kathy Piattelli, School Department Business Manager; Ellen Driscoll, our IT Director; Jane Cutsey, Director of Economics and Community Development; and Ruth Joffrey, our Town Planner. And further, for approval for taking a voice vote first on those votes requiring a supermajority. A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Just a few reminders before we begin. Does everyone have a copy of the articles and the motions? And I know some of you do not. Normally, I tell you they're out on the table. We are out of them. We didn't print enough for this crowd. However, all of our motions, articles and motions will be projected on the screen. Hopefully, you're sitting next to someone if you want to look at a hot copy. And I apologize for that. I would ask you at this time to please turn off all cell phones and pagers. And as in keeping with past practice, a motion to amend must be in writing. This is for the record. You'll be given time to write it out if needed. To address the meeting, please go to a microphone and be recognized by the moderator. Please state your name and address for the record. Evading questions are helpful, but to maintain order should be directed to the moderator. And last but not least, please maintain civility. Town meeting is not the place for personal attacks or derogatory comment. I hereby certify that the warrant for this special town meeting has been posted, served, and returned in a proper fashion by Bruce D. Gates, our Chief of Police. With that, we will move to Article One. Mr. Favre-Dory.
Article One, town vote to appropriate some taxation for some $46,567 to supplement the following budget and account numbers for fiscal year 2014. Department of Selectment, 122, account number 51101. Regular pay clerical, $1,567. Police Department, number 210, account 51126. Regular pay officers, $20,000. Council on Aging, Department 541, account number 549100. Perishables, $15,000. Employee benefits, Department 919, account 517400. Health insurance loanless challenge, $5,000. And unclassified department, number 950, account 574100. Re-lease, $5,000. I further move that the town transfer from free cash to some $150,000 to supplement Department 422, DPW Highway, no removal, account number 15293. I further move that the town transfer from free cash to some $50,000 to supplement Department 523, Veteran Services Medical and Cash Aid, account number 577000. I further move that the town transfer the sum $36,792 from the trash disposal enterprise unreserved retained earnings account to supplement Department 433, Trash Disposal Culture Life Insurance, account number 517400.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Article One requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Two. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Favre-Dory. Article Two, if you got an unpaid bill in favor of your ear, I move to postpone the article indefinitely. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone Article Two indefinitely. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Article Two requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. McKenna. I move to the town vote to transfer a sum of $91,422 from free cash to fund sick leave buybacks in the following departments. Police Department, number 519700, $35,136. Fire Department, Department number 519700, $48,885. Council on Aging, line number 519700, $7,421. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the article.
Mr. Laiter.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Mr. Moderator, this article funds the sick leave buybacks for full retiring employees.
Thank you. Further discussion? Article Three requires a simple majority vote. Hearing none. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Crowley.
I move to postpone this article indefinitely. Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone Article Four indefinitely. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those in opposition signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Five. Mr. Quell.
I move that the town vote transfer a sum of $40,000 from free cash to the Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability Trust Fund.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Quell.
The town began funding its future retiree healthcare expenses in a year.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
My unit committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article Five requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Delby.
I move that the town vote appropriate $113,828, of which $54,706 is from taxation, and $59,122 is from free cash, to the appropriate line item for fiscal year 2014 budget as established by the town accountant on the following collective bargaining agreements. General Municipal Employees Group, $37,103. Middleborough Clerical COA Union, $22,019. Middleborough Professional Firefighters Association, $54,706. I further move that the town vote appropriate $9,596, of which $4,419 is from the Waste Water Enterprise Unreserved Retained Earnings Account. $4,172 is from the Water Enterprise Unreserved Retained Earnings Account. And $1,005 is from the Trash Disposal Enterprise Unreserved Retained Earnings Account to the appropriate line item for fiscal year 2014 budget as established by the town accountant to fund the following collective bargaining agreements. General Municipal Employees Group, $6,650. Middleborough Clerical COA Union, $2,946.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Now, I won't discuss it, but I want to make a comment. For those of you looking at the hot copy, there's been a change in this motion. I'll be adding some things. And I'm going to ask the Town Manager to address us in reference to those changes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the two of the agreements just got signed in the last... Actually, we signed them tonight. In fact, we negotiated one link last week, one this morning. And so, we now have five of the seven bargaining units signed on for a one-year agreement through the end of FY 2014. The basic term is a 2% increase. From the town's point of view, all new employees will be paying 30% for their healthcare as opposed to 20% for employees hired after July 1. And there are some minor incidental benefit increases, COVID allowance, food allowance, things like that. And the, you know, we've used the combination of free cash and taxation to fund these programs. And you can undertake earnings from the enterprise.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
My unit committee recommends favorable action on Article Six, since we do not have time to review the document.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Delby.
As the Town Manager was to say, the town recently received nine-year agreements with three additional unions for a 2% cost of living increase for fiscal year 2014.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Article Six requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article Seven.
Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
I move that the town vote raise the cost savings of $48,336 from taxation to the purpose of reimbursing retired town employees and other persons enrolled in the town's Medicare health insurance plans and provide the health insurance premiums and co-pays paid by said retirees and other persons after fiscal year 2012 and pay any related costs.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
The town agreed to share 25% of the first-year cost savings with our employees and retirees from the health plan change year 2012. This is the second installment of the savings from the town's Medicare plans.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
My unit committee recommends favorable action on Article Seven.
Okay, what you said at the beginning here, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action. Any further discussion? Okay, Article Seven requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Eight. Mr. Moderator. Mr. McKenna.
I move that the town vote transfer of a sum of $16,742 from free cash to purchase new firearms for the police department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator, this is to replace the existing weapons of the police officers carry, the body gallows, the 25-gallon weapons. The trade-in agreement being worked, that has been worked out. So, the new weapons, new bolsters, magazines, all come. And it's only going to cost $16,000. And we'll have more firepower.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Begg.
My unit committee recommends favorable action on Article Eight.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Article Eight requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Crowley.
I move that the town vote transfer a sum of $45,000 from free cash to purchase a 2030 passenger special needs school bus for the school department.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Begg.
My unit committee recommends favorable action on Article Nine.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article Nine requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Ten.
Moderator.
Mr. Quell.
I move that the town vote indefinitely.
I have a motion and a second to postpone Article Ten indefinitely. Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. Article Ten requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Delby.
I move this town vote to transfer the sum of $70,263 from free cash to purchase computers, servers, monitors, printers, and related hardware and software for various town departments.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Begg.
My unit committee recommends favorable action on Article Eleven.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article Eleven requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article Twelve.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
I move to postpone the article indefinitely.
I have a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely Article Twelve. Discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. Article Twelve requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKenna.
I move to postpone this article indefinitely.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Indefinitely postpone Article Thirteen. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay. Article Thirteen passes unanimously. Article Fourteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Crowley.
I move that the town vote to transfer $14,787 from the receipts reserved for the water pollution abatement trust loan repayment account in order to meet the town's obligation for payment of the water pollution trust loan.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Quell.
This article appropriates the disnormality of debt service payment to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust from the loan repayment scheme to the town.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Begg.
My unit committee recommends favorable action.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article Fourteen requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The article carries unanimously. Article Fifteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Quell.
I move that the town vote to include water main replacements on Mitchell, Saicam, Park, Strope, Ein Street to the water system improvement project voted under Article Twelve, focal form for September 23, 2002, special town meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Quell.
Recently, a review of the infrastructure on these streets identified an pantry area project. This article will allow us to review existing funds, duty projects.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Begg.
My unit committee recommends favorable action on Article Fifteen.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Article Fifteen requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article Fifteen passes unanimously. Article Sixteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Delby.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $29,811 from the historic resources reserved of the Community Preservation Fund to fund climate control measures at the Middleborough Historical Museum for preservation of two museum buildings, historic town records, and artifacts containing individual buildings. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Delby.
Article Sixteen and Nineteen are being proposed by the Community Preservation Committee. The Board of Selectmen is recommending favorable action on Articles Sixteen through Eighteen.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Begg.
My unit committee also recommends favorable action on Articles Sixteen through Eighteen.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
Ordinarily, I'd be in favor of this article. I think it's a perfect candidate for our Community Preservation Act laws. But I don't think under other circumstances, that I'll present a minute, that the town should vote to approve this article. Now, by other circumstances, I mean this. About three to four years ago, the Middleborough Historical Society was dequied $150,000 by the late Andrew Wood, without any strings attached, to do it as they want. To the best of my knowledge, they have either $150,000 sitting in the savings account or $150,000 in an investment account. I don't think it's right, under all circumstances, for us to be appropriating any money for them. If they didn't have any money, it would be a legitimate expenditure. But under the circumstances that I've just presented, I think to read this article would be invincible. Please, vote no on this honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Quell.
Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. This article is to cover the cost of climate control and some insulation in the main buildings at the museum. There are seven buildings in this complex. There is a plan for work on these buildings. This money, $29,811, is a small piece of the work that needs to be done. And Senator McHare, who is the president of the Historical Association, can explain first.
It was approximately five years ago when we looked at our museum buildings and said, which ones do we have to forego? Let me also stress that we are a nonprofit. No one is paid in our association who maintains the museum. With that money, we were fortunate to request a turn things around. It allowed us to make some major repairs in building two, whereby our ceilings were collapsing. And we did those repairs. We're in the process right now of repairing three... redoing three roofs on our back buildings. So, yes, we are so fortunate to have that, but that is not enough money to carry on in climate control. So, I am hoping for a favorable vote.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKenna.
I'd like to know the definite amounts that they have spent under that dequest from Andrew Wood, and how much left they have from that dequest from Andrew Wood, before I change my mind. Do hold on a minute.
Thank you. Senator McHare, can you answer the gentleman's question?
Unfortunately, I did not bring my papers, but through the CPC committee, when I did submit our request for the grant, they did receive copies of all the expenses that we have been using for our museum building. And unfortunately, most of our expenses have to do with the museum buildings.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator. Uh, Mr. Riss.
Um, I've been involved with the, uh, historical museums since the nineteen-sixties, one way or another. Um, there's no change in down the funding this museum. They've gotten by over the years. With every amount of this lease to be quest, I ask you, what's the interest on that a year? And if, as Mr. Thomas suggests, we go spend the principal, they're right back to the same hole they've been in for forty plus. So, I recommend favorable action on this. It's a small investment for the community, and it's a big benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right. Article sixteen requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right. I'm gonna count this vote. All those in favor please stand. Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five. Section five.
Fifty-three.
And section six. Okay. All those in opposition please stand. Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five.
One.
And section six. The board is two hundred and twenty-five in favor, eighteen in opposition. The motion carries. Article seventeen. Ms. Norton.
I move that the town vote to appropriate sixty-eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars. I move that the town vote to appropriate sixty-eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars from the community preservation fund balance reserve to begin phase two of the town's historic and vital records preservation, which will include establishing a computerized retrieval system. Set funds to be expended under the direction of the community preservation committee.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Article seventeen requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. McKenna.
I move that the town vote to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars from a community preservation fund balance reserve under study by the historic mission to determine the overall condition of the estate and valuable conservation restriction that has historic preservation restrictions on the Oliver Homestead located on Plymouth Street under the Massachusetts set funds to be extended under the direction of the community preservation committee.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. Article nineteen requires, Article eighteen requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article eighteen carries unanimously. Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Crowley.
I move to postpone this article indefinitely.
I have a motion and a second to, um, postpone indefinitely Article nineteen. Discussion. Hearing none. Article nineteen requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article nineteen passes unanimously. Article twenty. Uh, Mr. Crowley.
I move to postpone this article indefinitely.
I have a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely Article twenty. Discussion. Article twenty at this point requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article twenty passes unanimously. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Delvey.
I move to postpone this article indefinitely.
I have a motion and a second to, um, postpone indefinitely Article twenty-one. Discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. Article twenty-one requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article nineteen passes unanimously. Twenty-one, Mr. Moderator. There was a question right down here. Larry, would you rise and speak?
On these last couple of issues, it doesn't say that he's gonna postpone, but does that mean indefinitely and never gonna discuss that issue again or intermedia? Um, do you wanna respond with that? Or the members of the conservation commission can answer that question? I was honestly interested in this issue as I came tonight and had a couple of questions regarding the purchase of the property.
Okay. We're gonna get an answer from Mr. Burges, Eric.
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Mr. Burges.
The conservation commission, the, uh, there's a lot of organizations, and we have to, uh, spend a lot of time putting this together, that at this point in time, the landowners may have a second thought, and, uh, if we can get it all turned around, we'll bring it back to the town meeting board again some day.
Thank you. Jason Mather.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
I have a question.
Okay. Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaws for the purpose of recreating the location of registered marijuana dispensaries by adding a new use over the table of uses in section three point one, subsection D, commercial uses, so that the new use is permitted in the general use GU and general use X GU X districts by special permit from the Board of Appeals, but not otherwise, and that the bylaw reads as follows.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on Article twenty.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Moderator. Go ahead. Michael Avante, Three Chapel Road, chairman of the planning board. On September twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, the Middleborough Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend favorable action on Article twenty-two and to recommend amendment of said article as follows. Most of what he said, but I'll repeat it. Amendment zoning bylaw by adding a new use to the table of uses in section three point one, which includes principal uses, subsection D, commercial uses. Registered marijuana dispensary is permitted in both the general use and the general use X district by special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals, but not otherwise, and is prohibited in all of the districts. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Any further discussion? This article requires a two-thirds vote. Seeing, uh, no further discussion, or hearing no further discussions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those in opposition signify by saying nay. The motion carries. Article forty-three.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. McKenna.
I move that the town vote to accept Act General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, section five, L. Upon acceptance of this section by a municipality and notwithstanding any other provisions of the chapter to the contrary, any taxes due under this chapter by a member or a dependent of a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or a reserve shall be deferred while the member is on active service outside and from the law for the next one hundred eighty days after that service. Now, where the company shall be assessed for the period before the expiration of the one hundred eighty days.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. McKenna.
The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on Article twenty-three.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Delvey.
The finance committee recommends favorable action on Article twenty-three.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article twenty-three requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion, uh, Article twenty-three passes unanimously. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator.
Uh, Mr. Crowley.
I move that the town vote to amend the existing town bylaw regulation of sewer use to comply with changes mandated by the United States Environmental Protection Agency as noted in the legislative June seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen. The regulation sewer use bylaw being unfollowed with county clerk.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Crowley.
The proposed change in our sewer, sewer use bylaw, which is being required by the Environmental Protection Agency, only impacts one industrial use, ocean spray groundwater. Ocean spray has been informed of the changes and has no objection to them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Article twenty-four requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those in opposition signify by saying nay. Article twenty-four passes unanimously. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator.
Uh, Mr. Crowley.
I move to adjust the bylaw as published in the law.
Second.
Okay. Uh, I have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator. Ms. Crowley.
Stormwater and any other non-stormwater discharge entering our townwide drainage system is regulated by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The EPA has issued a permit for the town to allow us to discharge stormwater from our drainage system to our lake streams as long as we manage what gets into our drainage system. One of the ways the town's required of the EPA to demonstrate active management of its stem stormwater is through enactment of this bylaw. Four hundred other towns throughout Massachusetts have been required to do and have an active buried stem of bylaw.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, Article twenty, twenty-five requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying nay. Uh, nay?
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. All right. Uh, it passes unanimously. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator. I move to postpone this article indefinitely.
Second. I have a motion and a second to, um, table indefinitely Article twenty-six. Discussion. Mr. Burges.
Go ahead. Uh, requested to remove this from the, uh, meeting tonight. The printed versions are much more elegant than, and the version that the selectmen, um, reviewed are not identical. It makes it very difficult to have a meaningful discussion. I will bring this back to the spring town meeting and, uh, maybe get the conversation going here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? This article requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. It carries unanimously. Article twenty-seven. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Norton.
I move that the town vote to accept Veronica Lane as a town layout as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by eminent domain or by gift the feet in the lay as shown on the road layout plan on file with county clerk entitled As Fifth Street Acceptance by Veronica Lane Acorn Ridge Subdivision, Middleborough, Mass. dated February two, nineteen ninety-three, revised August twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, prepared by Michael J. Coska Associates Incorporated and any related abusments to authorize the board to complete construction of the lay and related abusments to raise an appropriate fifty-eight thousand dollars by borrowing from the cost of construction and beneath this appropriation to authorize the treasurer to be approved by the Board of Selectmen to borrow fifty-eight thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to assess evidence for the construction of the general laws, Chapter eight.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Norton.
The residents of Victoria Lane have used all the improvements needed to bring the road up to this, up to standards through veterans assessed on their properties. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Moderator. Um, Ms. McKenon first. Go ahead.
My unit's committee recommends favorable action on the article.
Ms. Norton, go on. Uh, Michael Avante, Three Chapel Road. The planning board at their regularly scheduled meeting held on September tenth, two thousand and thirteen voted to recommend layout and acceptance of Veronica Lane by the town of Middleborough, and the condition of the road will be completed by the town in conformance with the construction standards and overall subdivision rules and regulations. Set completion work to be funded by a combination of subdivision surety and assessment of veterans. Veronica Lane, uh, located off of Wood Street, was permitted and approved by the planning board under subdivision control law on February seventh, nineteen eighty-nine. Unfortunately, the developer has defaulted on completing the road construction as required by the Middleborough Planning Board's definitive subdivision approval and Form H covenant. As a result, the subdivision has not been certified. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Article twenty-seven requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay.
Go ahead.
The motion carries.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Send your point of order.
What's the count on that, on that vote?
Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five.
Forty-nine.
And section six. Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section four. Section five.
Here it up.
Section six. The count is two and two hundred seventeen in favor, one in opposition. The motion carries. Article twenty-eight. Mr. Moderator. Mr. McKenna. I move that the town vote to accept Tallope Drive as a townway as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by eminent domain or by gift the fee in the way and related easements as shown on road layout plan. Unfiled with the county clerk entitled "As Built/Acceptance Plan, Tallope Drive", dated October twenty-first, nineteen ninety-four, and revised on September eighth, nineteen ninety-five by James P., Miller's P.E., and any related easements. Second. I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKenna.
The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Does the Planning Board have a report?
Adam Carbone, one twenty-nine Marion Road, member of the Planning Board. Um, the Planning Board at their regularly scheduled meeting held September tenth, two thousand thirteen, voted to recommend favorable action on the layout and acceptance of Tallope Drive by the Town of Midmore. Tallope Drive, located off of Burning Street, was permitted and approved under the subdivision control law November fifteenth, nineteen ninety, and certified complete by the Planning Board on November twelfth, nineteen ninety-six. Unfortunately, the developer chose not to submit the subdivision for public layout acceptance at that time, and since nineteen ninety-six, the subdivision infrastructure deteriorated and showed signs of pavement failure. The Planning Board has been advised that the developer has completed the necessary repair work on Tallope Drive to the satisfaction of the Midmore Department of Public Works and would recommend favorable action.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Article twenty-eight requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Crowley.
I move that the town vote to accept Donner Drive as a townway as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selectmen to acquire by eminent domain or by gift the fee in the way and related easements as shown on the road layout plan. Unfiled with the county clerk entitled "Roadway as Built in Midmore, Mass. To Honor Estate Subdivision, Donner Drive", dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, prepared by Azor Land Science Incorporated and any related easements.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Crowley.
The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Carbone.
Adam Carbone, one twenty-nine Marion Road. Um, the report of the Planning Board. The Planning Board at their regularly scheduled meeting held September tenth, two thousand thirteen, voted to recommend favorable action on the layout and acceptance of Donner Drive by the Town of Midmore. On August twentieth, two thousand thirteen, the Planning Board issued a certificate of completion for Donner Estates as defining that the construction of Donner Drive and the installation of municipal services were complete and built in compliance with the approved definitive subdivision plan and the Town of Midmore subdivision regulation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Article twenty-nine requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article twenty-nine carries unanimously. Article thirty.
I move that the town vote transfer the care custody management control of certain real estate on the notably cited Wareham Street, being part of lot eight seven two on Assessor's Map fifty-eight D, and being sometimes known as Tom's Memorial Park from the municipal light board, Gas and Electric Commission to the Board of Selectmen of the same purpose as the real estate is currently used for, such as real estate consisting of two point six nine acres of land, more or less, and being bounded suddenly by Wareham Street, west of it by a chain link fence located east of the main building on the Wareham Street Electric Station, notably by lot eight two eight on Assessor's Map fifty-eight D, and deeply imparked by the Connecticut River, and impared by land shown on lot one six three eight on Assessor's Map fifty-eight D.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Crowley.
The Gas and Electric have maintained Thomas Memorial Park from its years of work with the degree to take care of the park going forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Article thirty requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article thirty passes unanimously. Article thirty-one.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McDenna.
I move that the town vote to authorize the municipal light board and the Gas and Electric Commission to acquire by gift on behalf of the town easement for the transmission of gas and electric services in private ways off North Street, known as Pierce Lane and Westman Avenue.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McDenna.
The G E is updating its services on these streets, and acquiring new easements is part of that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Article thirty-one requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article thirty-one passes unanimously. Article thirty-two. Uh, Mr. Norton.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept conveyance for the town from the Plumb County Commissioner to the relation of the Park and Avenue County Highway Layout, which is to be discontinued and which contains a cross located in an island part of the layout, and to accept conveyance for the town of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a portion of the state highway layout for Route twenty-eight, West Coast Street, which is to be discontinued, such portion to be located adjacent to the aforementioned portion of the county highway layout. To discontinue as a townway the said portions of the state highway layout to be effective when the Commonwealth discontinues that portion as a state highway to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said portions of the county and state highway layouts to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of sale, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell and convey the said portions of the county and state highway layouts on such terms and conditions determined by the Board.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Norton.
The Board of Selectmen is interested in letting the prolonged cross remain in its present location. This article is asking for authorization to take the necessary steps to preserve it where it currently stands.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Moderator.
Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Moderator. At present, this issue is really not a Middleborough problem. Now, I say that in the following way. This land in question right now belongs to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the Plumb County. Uh, the action that is being recommended to you will open up our town to a number of possible legal challenges. I think we should be aware of that, and I don't think we could close our eyes to those realities. The selectmen have already received communication from a national organization clearly stating their awareness of this issue and their strong encouragement to move the cross to private property. This group often takes legal action on these types of issues. This action to receive the land and then sell it to Quanis or any other private individual is very questionable legally. I would also, I have also, um, have been informed by a, a person who is associated with Quanis Club, surprisingly, I just today, that the club itself has not voted to participate in the purchase of the property. I'm quite concerned that in the midst of this, Middleborough goes through this act, and it may well be that Middleborough is practically stuck with this if the Quanis does not go through with, with their side of the arrangement. I understand there have not been an official vote for the club of this, this direction. On the legal front, making this traffic island private property will be a violation of the Eighteenth Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution that directs, that directly restricts all levels of government in Massachusetts from aiding any religious undertaking. The Mass ACLU has been made aware, not by me, by others, of this issue in Middleborough, and has raised the question of the Mass constitutional restriction as well as the federal restrictions that exist. The, uh, federal restriction is called, uh, the Distalator Clause in its, I think it's, um, uh, in the, number one, I'm sorry, number one in the, um, in the amendments to the Constitution. Uh, their lawyer, this is the Mass ACLU, is quoted in a Globe article in which she comments on transferring land to maintain the cross in its present position, just what we were directed as the intent of the selectmen. Quote, "That raises significant questions about whether this move to give land to the Quanis Club would violate the U.S. Constitution." End quote. Selling the land to maintain the cross may also be viewed as aiding religion to maintain a religious message. In a recent email, she states, quote, "I do believe there is a strong argument that the warrant article which explicitly mentions the cross is aimed at aiding religious expression and that the court, I'm sorry, and that the county and the state may have no valid public purpose in conveying this property to the town. The town would have no public purpose either and simply wants to continue the display of the cross slash worship sign in an area that people traditionally have viewed as public and will continue to do so in the future, even if the Quanis Club raises title, uh, assumes title to the property. We, and I put it here, the Mass ACLU, are working with a major Boston law firm to research the issues, and there are many," end quote. This is not something that is just a Middleborough issue. I tell you, this is something that is being viewed both on a national and on a state level by outsiders who are serious about their concerns about taking this action. In a recent, uh, news article that was in the Globe, just happened to be on Saturday, there was a, a case of a town in Ohio, and the Ohio ACLU sued that community for the display of a religious item in a public school. Not only were they forced to remove it, they also had to pay ninety-five thousand dollars to cover the cost of the ACLU's use expenses. So, it's not just whether or not we as a town might have to pay to have our legal folks defend the town if indeed this were to be challenged. We might very well, if we lose this case, also have to pay legal expenses to the Massachusetts ACLU or any others who challenge us. I'm hoping that the caring citizens of this community can work together to solve this problem for all the levels of state and local governments and for us citizens by working with the Quanis and any other private groups or individuals to move this structure to a private location using private expenses to a visible and prominent location in this community. Government should not be involved in this. We are caring citizens, we should do this. I would, I have already spoken to two folks who are connected to religious groups in this community and have not been turned away as far as a possibility of being able to cite somebody like this on really, on property owned by members of, uh, the community. I think there are a number of other locations that might well be willing to have this structure. I also conferred with a structural engineer who, while we don't know for sure because we'd have to dig down to find out, suspect this cross, which has a, I believe, uh, an eyefrayed metal kind of skeleton to it, is probably bolted to a large piece of cement below it. Those bolts could be detached, and I believe this could be moved without being an impossibility. So, I ask this town to fully investigate the legalities of selling this property. And I don't think we have done that as fully as we need to. We are not playing around with folks who are not paying attention to this, this locally. This is both a state and even a national issue. A national group has sent the selectmen two letters. I don't believe they have responded in any way to those two letters. But they have sent this to our selection and, uh, the receipt of those, uh, part of the selectmen's, um, what do you call it, when you get something in the mail? Correspondent, there we go, I'm sorry, I'm a day, I kind of forgot my words. Correspondent, so this is public information, I was able to get this public information. So, the selectmen are well aware of the significant issues that participate in this kind of an activity legally exposed to. And I'm hoping we can save this issue from becoming a significant problem for this community by finding a way to relocate this onto private property. Have this done by us as citizens, I'd be very pleased to work with the Quanis. I'll be very pleased to contribute finances to it this, and I'm hoping that we can do this. So that, I tell you, this is not a problem that the town of Middleborough at this point needs, and it carries significant financial concerns and legal issues. And I would ask you to, instead of supporting this article, I'm going to make a motion that I believe is appropriate, and I'd ask town councilor to clarify this if it isn't. And that is that I'm asking that at this point, we move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, which is actually an amendment to the motion. So, I will accept discussion on the amendment, which would be to postpone indefinitely this article.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Andrews.
Lincoln Andrews, twenty-eight Sixth Street, Middleborough, Mass. I'm not sure that I've ever heard a town meeting actually threatened before. Um, basically, if the board, I commend the selectmen and the town manager and the Quanis Club, and if all of this, uh, problems that just even claim is going to rain out on Middleborough happens, then at that time, we can take the wrecking balls of the cross.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and for those that don't know, I am the president of the Middleborough, Middleborough Quanis Club. Couple of things I'd like to point out, and I, I think it's unfortunate that there hasn't been a dialogue uh, with the people who are agreed directly to Quanis. So, at any rate, um, to address some issues, I first of all believe, as do many other people, trying to move the cross would destroy it. So, if we take your course of action, and what if, what if we can't put it back together? The second problem becomes, which church gets it? So, every church in Middleborough wants it, we can only put it one place. I don't see that as a viable option. In terms of legal responsibility, and one of the reasons my club hasn't taken a formal vote is we're waiting to see what happens this evening. But I fully expect that we will step up and take responsibility for the cross if we're given the opportunity. If for any reason the Quanis Club did not, I would start a foundation myself as a private citizen in Middleborough. Anyone that's interested becau- could become a foundation member, and we would take care of the Quanis Cross. So, one way or another, it'll be done. But, um... that, this doesn't need to get acronomous. But we have Liberty Institute of Plano, Texas, who are contending, all of the American Legion, all of the VFW, war memorials with religious symbols on them, as well as many other people who are in similar situations. They want to say a prayer in class, it's not allowed, or they want to say a prayer at the valedictorian of a Texas high school. School system says you can't, they bought it, they won. Anyone that's interested can go to libertyinstitute.org, and you can see what these people do. I looked at the website this evening, they say they have a ninety-nine percent success rate fighting ACLU and Freedom From Religion, which is a group out of Wisconsin, which seem to be the two main groups that insist that the cross be moved to private property and so forth. I've been talking to Hiram Sasser, I believe Hiram Sasser has talked to council here in Millboro, Hiram Sasser Esquire, and he is very confident that this case, were to go to court, that we would win. I would hate to see that happen, I think it's a colossal waste of valuable time. For anyone that's in the community service business, you know, we'd like to have time and resources to do valuable things in the community. I'd hate to see a great deal of time wasted on this, but I don't go forward with this lightly, thinking that myself, my board of directors of the Quanis Club, the town of Millboro, or anyone else could be sued over it. I hope that we'll vote on this this evening and move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Gavone.
I believe we're actually speaking on the motion to amend.
You're not speaking on the motion to amend.
So I think currently at this point, I would be speaking against the motion to amend. That would basically put this off and not give the board of selectmen, what they're asking for is basically, they're not saying that they're doing anything at this point. If I read this original motion correctly, it basically gives them the power to start to basically take this property into town custody and then determine what could be done with that power, or what could be done with that property upon receipt of that, whether that's for sale, transfer, whatever it is, if I'm understanding the original motion correctly.
Your understanding is correct.
So all of the things that Mr. Stevens spoke about as to further researching, further spending some time to find the legal issues and legality of what the town is going to open themselves up to, this motion itself is not holding the town up to anything, at least at this point. It's authorizing our board of selectmen with the town council to basically take the appropriate legal actions, and I think that we authorized our board of selectmen and voted them to hold this responsibility in legal matters as far as contract negotiations, as far as all of the other things. And I think we can basically respect that the board that be elected are not going to open the town up to a huge legal battle.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Gavone.
Regard to this amendment, I think we've had enough discussion on this amendment, just to whether or not to put this off. So why don't we move this question right now on the amendment only, so we can vote in a regular poll?
Lauren Eagle.
Thank you. Okay, we will move the amendment. The amendment, at this point in time, what you're voting on is to postpone indefinitely this.
Point of order.
State your point of order.
I believe a motion to move requires vote to move, there was no vote taken to move, and I would speak to that.
What's the motion?
All right, I have, I have, the question's been called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion will be moved. The amendment at this point in time is to postpone indefinitely this article. The amendment requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition signify by saying nay.
Nay.
We are going to the main motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Gavone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of the questions that I looked at when I looked at this item is that, as a community, we've done this before with regards to religious, in fact, this past year, at a previous town meeting, we authorized to use some taxpayer dollars, CPA funds, to actually fund, partially fund the repair of an organ located within a church or a religious hall within our community. So this is an unfounded thing, this isn't something we've never done before, and as a community, we should stand together and respect what I call a historic monument, regardless of what the shape is and what it says, it's an historic monument within our community, and I think that we should allow this to happen.
Mr. Stevens.
I was more aware that this is likely to be an action that might go forward. Candidly, my main reason for coming before you all is to try and organize this community to get us out of this by finding some alternative. I hear people say that, if we put one-third the investment of effort and angst into finding an appropriate location and to see how feasible it is to move this structure to a place of prominence where it can be haunted and visible, I think that would be well worth doing it. I would ask one other question of the selectmen or perhaps the town council, and that is, why is the town of Millboro getting into taking ownership? If this can be transferred to Quanis, why does not the Department of Transportation, Commonwealth, and Quanis County transfer this? And I'd like to hear more of an explanation than the one I got the other night with the justice. They can't. What do you mean they can't? Why can they not put the town in Millboro, please, please clarify that.
Do I want to take a stab at that?
Mr. Moderator, I did talk to council for Mass Carbine Transportation, and they don't have no mechanism to transfer the property to a non-prevident, they only transfer it to this town.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Good. Ms. Andrews.
Um, Mr. Stevens brings a very good point. Could there be an alternative solution to this to be proud? My understanding is that the state and the county can only be friendly to a municipality. So we have to take control of the property if we are in fact taking it out of control of the state and the county. As a municipality, we can then declare that land a surplus and put it out for private sealed bid, which will eliminate any discussion about the appearance of it for private as far as directing its final ownership. If you put it out for private sealed bid, the town then releases itself from the ownership of a property that has a potentially litigious monument, and the private best bid doesn't have any appearance of being directed for, what did you call it, that was a beautiful combination of words, promoting a religious point of view. So if we in fact allow the selectmen as our representatives to control the land, declare it surplus, put it under private sealed bid, nobody knows who's putting in that bid, and that private owner then has no issue with any problem with the ACLU suing it. Not to say that the Quanis would be the best bidder, we don't know, we would put it in the novel, it would be private. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, my only problem with that would be if someone decided, I'm willing to spend ten thousand dollars, and when I get it, I take it apart, brick by brick, and throw it in a dump somewhere because I hate Christianity, I hate crosses. I would like to think that wouldn't happen in the world we live in, but I've seen some pretty bizarre stuff happen over the years. I don't like the idea of applying bid, only because someone who, as I said, would want to take it apart, destroy it, you know, could, and willing to spend the money, would have the ability to do that.
Okay, I'm going to jump in and make a point of order of my own. We're getting away from the actual motion. The article motion is to make, authorize the board of selectmen to make the action. I don't think that it's the job of this town meeting at this point in time to direct them in reference to what action they would take if this motion is passed. Is there any further discussion on the motion itself?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Prawley.
Allen Prawley, Duxell Forest Street. This motion allows the board of selectmen in the town of Millboro to do something with this property until this motion is passed, do you not? The state, I believe one arm is over the state land, when the county commissioners are in control of the land that the cross is actually situated on. If they decide to knock it down, they can knock it down. If they decide to keep it, they can keep it. It's not our decision until this motion is passed. We can't make any decision until this moves forward. That's all we're asking, is the ability to make a decision after this is moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Moderator.
All right, one more time, I'll see you in the next one.
I appreciate your patience. I agree with Mr. Prawley, with Mr. Prawley's comment that the town can do nothing, and the town, by taking this action, assumes some significant responsibility. Mr. Prawley commented that there was a threat made. I'm not making any threats, I have not contacted anybody, I'm not running toward the voids. I'm telling you though, that this action is under examination by a number of agencies outside of this community who are taking this very seriously. In my discussion with ACLU, ACLU lawyer, they are already in contact with a law firm specific to this case. If this community is not aware of that, you're not being realistic, and I'm anxious that you are realistic, about what is going on and what potentially could happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we're going to move forward at this point. Article thirty-two requires a two-thirds vote. And where there's a question on this, I'm not even going to attempt to voice them, we're going to take a count of them. All those in favor, please stand and be counted. Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five.
Fifty.
And section six. All those in opposition, please rise and be counted.
Mr. Moderator. Chief.
I don't think any of your counters are counting the people that are standing.
I'm sorry?
None of your counters were counting any of the people that were standing in the center.
Okay, I haven't, thank you. All right, section one.
Three.
Section two.
Three.
Section three.
Four.
Section four.
Twenty-two.
And section six.
Fifty.
And section six.
All those in opposition, please rise and be counted.
Mr. Moderator. Chief.
I don't think any of your counters are counting the people that are standing.
I'm sorry?
None of your counters were counting any of the people that were standing in the center.
Okay, I haven't, thank you. All right, section one.
Three.
Section two.
Three.
Section three.
Four.
Section four.
Two.
And section six.
One.
Okay, the final count is two hundred and twenty-eight in favor, ten opposed, two-thirds would be a hundred and forty-eight for motion carriers. Article thirty-three.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McKibben. I move that the town vote to appropriate sum, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, from the proceeds of a surry pursuant to the subdivision control law. As general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, from the subdivision known as Burnway Estates, which is in default of completion, to be available to the planning board for expenditure for expenditure to meet the costs and expenses for completing the work as specified in the approved subdivision plan.
I have a motion in a second, discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Prawley.
An appropriation of one hundred thousand from a surry account requires town meeting authorization, board of selectmen recommend favorable action on that.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Day.
I need to be recommended favorable action on Article thirty-three.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, this is a report from the planning board, August sixth, two thousand thirteen, the Millboro Planning Board called in two, called in two hundred and ten thousand dollars, subdivision surety for Burnway Estates because the developer had defaulted on completion of the subdivision in the required period of time, dated December fourteenth, two thousand seven, and the additional time that the board had given him August one, two thousand thirteen, had come to the end without completion. The planning board believes that the subdivision roadways, known as Burnway and Lookout Circle, need to have binary course fully repaired prior to this winter, with all work being completed by June two thousand thirteen. Or pavement degradation will be so great that it will preclude the town from interceding in using these available surety funds. The subdivision control law, National Law, Chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, requires that the expenditure of subdivision surety that exceeds one hundred thousand dollars by the town's planning board require that the town meeting appropriate said funds for planning board expenditure to meet the costs and expenses for completing the work as classified. The planning board has put, I'm sorry, the planning board has put completion of the Burnway Estates subdivision out of the public bid, has received an acceptable bid to complete the work within the anticipated budget, has issued a notice of award pending a favorable vote by this town meeting, and said award has been accepted by the contractor. The request is the town meeting act favorably on this article so that the contract for work can be signed at the planning board's next meeting, and the necessary pavement repairs and road completion may commence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
All right, seeing none, hearing none, article thirty-three requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article thirty-three passing to you.
Mr. Moderator.
I move that the town vote to authorize board of selectmen to amend the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Lake. It permits Millboro to provide water services to existing local customers by adding a new residential customer located at Thirty-Second Bridge Street.
I have a motion in a second, discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Prawley.
Town meeting action is required to authorize any intermunicipal agreements longer than two years involving water and wastewater services.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, article thirty-four requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article thirty-three passing to you.
Mr. Moderator.
I move that the town vote to authorize board of selectmen to amend the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Lake. It permits Millboro to provide water services to existing local customers by adding a new residential customer located at Thirty-Second Bridge Street.
I have a motion in a second, discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Prawley.
Town meeting action is required to authorize any intermunicipal agreements longer than two years involving water and wastewater services.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, article thirty-four requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article thirty-three passing to you.
Mr. Moderator.
I move that the town vote to authorize board of selectmen to amend the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Lake. It permits Millboro to provide water services to existing local customers by adding a new residential customer located at Thirty-Second Bridge Street.
I have a motion in a second, discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Prawley.
Town meeting action is required to authorize any intermunicipal agreements longer than two years involving water and wastewater services.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, article thirty-four requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have, the motion carries. I'd now entertain a motion to dissolve this special town meeting vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed.
Aye.
I'm telling you, though, that this action is under examination by a number of agencies outside of this community who are taking this very seriously. In my discussion with ACLU, ACLU lawyer, they are already in contact with a law firm specific to this case. If this community is not aware of that, you're not being realistic, and I'm anxious that you are realistic, about what is going on and what potentially could happen.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move forward with this point. Article thirty-two requires a two-thirds vote. And where there's a question on this, I'm not even going to attempt to voice one. We're going to take a count of vote. All those in favor, please stand and be counted. Section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five. And section six. All those in opposition, please rise and be counted.
Mr. Moderator.
Chief.
I don't think any of your counters are counting the people that are standing.
I'm sorry?
None of your counters were counting any of the people that were standing in the center.
Okay, I have one. Thank you. All right, section one. Section two. Section three. Section four. Section five. And section six. Okay, the final count is two-hundred-and-twenty-eight in favor, ten opposed, two-thirds would be a hundred-and-forty-eight for motion carried. Article thirty-three. Mr. Moderator. Mr. McKibben. I move that the town vote to appropriate sum, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, from the proceeds of a surry pursuant to the subdivision control. That's general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, from the subdivision known as Burnway Estates, which is in default of completion, to be available to the planning board for expenditure to meet the costs and expenses for completing the work as specified in the approved subdivision plan. I have a motion on the second. Mr. Moderator. An appropriating sum of one-hundred-thousand for maturity account requires town meeting authorization, the board of selectmen recommend favorable action on that. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Day.
I think the committee recommends favorable action on Article thirty-three.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator. This is a report from the planning board. On August sixth, two thousand thirteen, the municipal planning board called in two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars for subdivision surety for Burnway Estates because the developer had defaulted on completion of the subdivision in the required period of time, dated December fourteenth, two thousand seven, and the additional time that the board had given him August one, two thousand thirteen, had come to the end without completion. The planning board believes that the subdivision roadways, known as Burnway and Lookout Circle, need to have finer course fully repaired prior to this winter, with all work being completed by June two thousand thirteen. Or pavement degradation will be so great as to preclude the town from interceding using these available surety funds. The subdivision control law, National Law Chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, requires that the expenditure of subdivision surety that exceeds one-hundred-thousand dollars by the town's planning board require that the town meeting appropriate said funds for planning board expenditure to meet the costs and expenses for completing the work as classified. The planning board has put, sorry, the planning board has put completion of the Burnway Estates subdivision out of the public bid, has received an acceptable bid to complete the work within the anticipated budget, has issued a notice of award pending a favorable vote by this town meeting, and said award has been accepted by the contractor. Request that the town meeting act favorably on this article so that the contract for the work can be signed at the planning board's next meeting, and the necessary pavement repairs and road completion may commence. Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, hearing none. Article thirty-three requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay. Article thirty-three passing. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
I move that the town vote to authorize board of selectmen to amend the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Lake. It permits Millboro to provide water services to existing lakehead customers by adding a new residential customer located in Thirty-Second Bridge Street.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Crowley.
Town meeting action is required to authorize any intermunicipal agreements longer than two years involving water and wastewater services.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Article thirty-four requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have the motion carried. I'd now entertain a motion to dissolve this section of town meeting vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed.